It is Monday, April 18th at 6:45 Eastern. We do have a quorum, and I'm calling this workshop session of the Lewisville City Council to order. First thing we have on the agenda is just a discussion of regular agenda items and consent agenda items. We don't have anything else, so council, if you want to just go through those items. We have a public hearing. Item one.
Mayor, I'll just let you know that Richard will have a presentation that he needs to get out in the open at that point.
Richard, did you know that was coming?
I hope he does.
Okay, perfect.
I did have a question. That's with the city of Dallas, of the more than the hours that has happened.
No opinion as an issue yet.
Okay.
Item G, Consent Agenda two, three. Which, how many projects is this project? Is this number two or number three?
Number three.
So this is number two, and Kelly's probably better suited to answer that question. You know, how many total are there?
The total of 11 projects.
Wow, okay.
This is the largest one.
Yeah, this is the whole, the whole iteration, basically, what, expanding that by like 30%?
Uh, yes, sir. And we're up to right now.
Yeah, yeah, back of the envelope. Item four. And this is the public safety software ERP that we've been kicking around, so excited to see that moving forward. I think staff will be too. Item H, eight. This is the third reading, because we did not have the emergency clause on this particular And item nine is to change the dates on that one, so that's why it looks a little similar. Item 10. We'll have a presentation.
We'll have Jason Hughes give his normal short review of what's gone on. We'll do that in a little bit, as well as for number 11, if you guys want him to repeat the same thing for number 11.
That might be fun.
Can we do them together or not?
I mean, you're gonna have to make separate motions, and they're listed separately, so just keep them separate.
But if there's discussion, if there could be discussion, it happens for both of them at the same time, right?
Well, they're listed.
One's for paving and one's for utilities, right?
They're listed as separate hearings.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got to keep them separate.
Got to keep them split. Okay. And that takes us to reports. Anything else on the agenda? All right, we are going to take a break until 7 o'clock, which we will reconvene in the other room. That was easy. It is 7 o'clock. I'm calling this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum, and if you all would please stand, bow your heads, and join me in a moment of silent contemplation. And please spend some extra time for those who are living in war-torn parts of this Amen. Councilmember Meredith, could you do the slides?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one indivisible.
All right, we've got a proclamation. I'm gonna come down to the, we have that podium that swivels now, it's really cool. And who do I have here for Crime Victims Rights Week? Anyone? Any of the team? Hi, come on. TJ. Walkie. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
All right. So we have a proclamation. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than 20 million crimes each year, and crime can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status; and whereas too many communities feel disconnected from the justice and social response systems and have lost trust in the ability of those systems to recognize them and respond to their needs; and whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs, rebuilds trust in the criminal justice and social service systems; and whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 24th through 30th, 2022, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime are offered accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime; and whereas the City of Lewisville Police Department is dedicated to a vision for the future in which all victims are strengthened by the response they receive, organizations are resilient in the response to challenges, and communities can seek collective justice and healing. Now therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, Texas, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of April 24th through 30th, 2022, as Crime Victims Rights Week. Proclaim this 18th day of April, 2022. Would you want to say a few words?
I just want to say it's an honor being here. My name is Walkia Easter. I know Charlene Collins was the crime victim advocate for many years, but I'm Mrs. Easter. Easter like the holiday that just passed, and it's an honor to serve the community along with our victims.
We really appreciate all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So proud that we have advocacy like that in the city. It's a great thing. Chief, want to join me up here? I think we have a, Mr. Cameron Wood? Ms. Wood, would you mind? Like to present you with this certificate of appreciation. This certificate is presented to Mr. Cameron Wood. On October 6th, 2021, you witnessed a major accident on I-35 where an 18-wheeler had crashed and was fully engulfed in flames. You stopped your vehicle and ran back to the crash to check on the driver. The driver's side door was missing, and the driver was unconscious in the seat. You took immediate action and pulled the driver out of the burning truck. You then placed the driver into the backseat of your own vehicle to get the driver away from the rapidly spreading fire and called 911. It is believed that your quick and immediate actions saved this man's life. On behalf of the City of Lewisville and the Lewisville Police Department, thank you for your willingness to become involved. Presented this 18th day of April, 2022. And, Mr. Wood, that's community. I appreciate you stepping up.
Just what you said, Mayor. It's all about getting involved, and so many people would have driven by, this gentleman stopped, and probably without, without his help, this, this person may very well have died because he was unconscious, so thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for setting the example.
Yes, sir.
Public hearing, item E1. We have a public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter 17 zoning of the Lewisville City Code by amending Section 17-31, location regulations for sexually-oriented businesses by repealing said section and adopting a new Section 17-31, which amends certain definitions and standards outlined therein for clarity and to align with other related city regulations, and establishes a certificate of compliance process to signify compliance with the standards outlined therein. The city has a two-part system for regulation of sexually-oriented businesses in city limits. Licensing outlined in Article 11, Chapter 7 of the City Code and distance requirements outlined in Chapter 17, the city's zoning regulations. Based on the research, study, and report findings concerning adverse secondary effects of SOBs, to ensure compliance with the most current case law regarding regulation of SOBs, and to ensure compliance with Article 11, Chapter 7, this ordinance updates definitions and regulations throughout the SOB regulations in the zoning ordinance. In addition, it establishes a certificate of compliance process to ensure distance requirements are being met. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, 7 to 0, of these changes on April 5th, 2022. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. We do have Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, here to give a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Gilmore. This brief presentation will give you an overview of the background on sexually-oriented businesses, also referred to as SOBs. We will cover the definition of an SOB, along with research, study, and report findings, and references to those findings. I'll give you a quick overview of the purpose of the location regulations, along with the current regulations as they stand in Chapter 17 of the zoning ordinance. We'll cover the proposed changes, and then finally, staff will provide a formal recommendation. So as you mentioned in the administrative comments, we do have a two-part system for regulating SOBs. Chapter 7 is the licensing section, and that was amended by the council just a few weeks ago on March 7th. And then we have the location requirements. That's found in the zoning ordinance, which is Chapter 17 of the code ordinances. So bear with me as I recite the definition of an SOB for context. An SOB shall mean an adult arcade, adult bookstore, or adult video store, adult cabaret, adult motel, adult motion picture theater, adult theater, escort agency, nude model studio, or sexual encounter center, or any commercial establishment of which the principal business is the offering of a service or the selling, renting, or exhibiting of devices or any other items intended to provide sexual stimulation or sexual gratification to its customers, and which are distinguished by or characterized by an emphasis on matter depicting, describing, or relating to specified sexual activities or specified anatomical areas, except the term shall not include the businesses outlined in Section 243.004 of the Texas Local Government Code as it exists or may be amended. This is the new definition that was adopted by the council on March 7th. So I want to give you a really quick summary of what was adopted on March 7th in Chapter 7, the licensing section. What that, what those amendments did, they updated the definitions and the regulations throughout that licensing ordinance. It increased the minimum age of SOB employees to 21. It provided that the penalty for violating the SOB licensing ordinance is a Class 8 misdemeanor, and it required SOBs to close between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. So those amendments, along with the amendments before you tonight to Chapter 17, are based upon research, study, and report findings, as well as testimony and evidence provided in SOB cases nationwide. They have been, they have shown that the following negative secondary impacts of SOBs, among many others, include, and I've got six, six points here. Number one, SOBs create increases of crime in the immediate area regardless of the location of the SOB that may extend into surrounding areas. Number two, a concentration of SOBs in any one area of the city increases the negative effects of property values. Number three, certain uses are inconsistent with SOBs and therefore may suffer negative secondary impacts. Number four, ambient crime risk can increase by as much as 100% or more in an area where an SOB opens. Number five, specifically, SOBs pose large statistically significant ambient public safety hazards in terms of prostitution, drugs, assault, robbery, and vandalism. And finally, number six, property values are negatively affected in areas surrounding SOBs extending for a significant distance into those surrounding areas. And then this next slide just has a listing of references from the various studies. I will also note in your packet for this agenda item, there were about 36 additional studies provided as backup. So the purpose of SOB regulations in the zoning ordinance, we have three purposes and two intent statements. So the first purpose is to promote the health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the citizens of our city, two, establish reasonable and uniform regulations of SOBs, number three, to minimize secondary harm inside and outside of SOBs, four, to minimize harm caused by negative secondary impacts. And as far as the intent, number one, it does not intend to restrict the First Amendment rights. Also, the intent does not intend to restrict distributors and exhibitors of sexually-oriented entertainment or their market. So this next slide has a listing of our current SOB location regulations, which basically states that it is a violation to operate an SOB in four specified locations. A, within 1,000 feet of the district boundary of any residential zoning district. B, within 1,000 feet of any other SOB. C, within 1,000 feet of the property line of any church, hospital, public park, school, or civic facility, daycare center, day nursery, or kindergarten. And D, within 1,000 feet of the property line of a lot devoted to a residential use. And I will also note, too, that SOBs are considered a business and not a land use that is regulated by the zoning ordinance. So the proposed changes being brought forth to you tonight, we are not changing those distance regulations. Those 1,000-foot distance regulations are staying intact, but these amendments do provide clarity to those distance requirements. It also ensures consistency with the licensing regulations in Chapter 7, including all of the definitions. And then the second purpose was to establish a certificate of compliance process to ensure distance requirements are being met. So therefore, based on research, study, and report findings previously provided to the city council and discussed today, and to minimize negative secondary effects, staff recommends that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the agenda item caption. With that, I would like to answer any questions.
I have a question.
Councilmember Green.
Richard, you said something just now that gave, brought a question to my mind. So you said that this is not considered a land use. It's, it's more of a business. So could this operate within any non-residential zoning? Or does the property have to be zoned something specific?
Any zoning classification that would allow a business.
Okay.
It would fall in any of those categories.
As long as it meets the distance requirements from everything else.
That's correct.
And just to clarify, because I know I will have people asking me, why can't we just like say outright, and just we can't have it? We can't do that. Correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
It is not listed in any of the use charts of any of the zoning districts.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Move to approve as presented.
Move to close first.
Move to close.
All right. Thank you, sir. I need a second.
Second.
All right. Council, please vote to close the public hearing. Motion passes 5 to 0. I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending Chapter 17 zoning of the Lewisville City Code by amending, by amending Section 17-31, location regulations for sexually-oriented businesses by repealing said section and adopting a new Section 17-31, which amends certain definitions and standards outlined therein for clarity and to align with other related city regulations, and establishes a certificate of compliance process to signify compliance with the standards outlined therein, providing a repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0.
Mayor, can I confirm who made the motion and who seconded the motion on that? I just want to make sure that was right in vote cast.
Motion.
You made the motion, Brandon.
Second.
And you seconded. All right, I will fix that. Thank you.
Thank you. Item F, Visitor-Citizen Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we've not received any.
Item G, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of an item. A speaker card or e-comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any speaker cards for?
No, sir, we do not.
All right. So council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Item H, Regular Hearing, number eight, third reading, consideration of ordinance approving an amended and restated service and assessment plan for Josie Lane Public Improvement District. A public hearing on this ordinance which approves the amended and restated preliminary service and assessment plan for the Josie Lane Public Improvement District was held at the March 21st, 2022 city council meeting. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the city council approved the ordinance. The city charter requires three readings of an ordinance caption unless, among other things, the ordinance contains a statement of the nature of the emergency, which this ordinance did not. The third and final reading will be on April 18th, 2022. The ordinance will take effect immediately upon final passage. It is recommended that the city attorney provide the third and final reading of the ordinance caption.
This is an ordinance approving an amended and restated service and assessment plan for Josie Lane Public Improvement District.
All right. Item nine, Consideration of Resolution of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, Approving a First Amendment to the Josie Lane Public Improvement District Reimbursement Agreement and Enacting Other Provisions Relating There Too. Centurion Acquisitions LP, developer of the Josie Lane Public Improvement District, is requesting to modify the beginning collection date of assessments within Phase II West of the development. Collections of the first annual installments for this phase were to commence with the tax bills due on January 31st, 2024. The developer is requesting the date be moved forward by one year. On March 21st, 2022, a public hearing was held to consider changes to the amended and restated service and assessment plan to change the timing for when the collection of assessment occurs. Final approval of the SAP is planned for April 18th, 2022. An amendment to the reimbursement agreement is now required to conform to the changes in the amended SAP to reflect the language to the beginning collection date for the Phase II West assessments. It's recommended that the city council approve the resolution as set forth in the caption above. Council, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Item 10, Consider and Take Action on an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, Authorizing the Issuance of City of Lewisville, Texas General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bonds, Series 2022, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $68,750,000, awarding the sale thereof, levying a tax in payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting provisions incident and relating to the subject and purposes of this ordinance. Staff is planning to issue approximately $68.75 million in a general obligation refunding and improvement bonds this fiscal year. In order to allow flexibility in setting the sale date for the bonds, Hilltop Securities, the city's financial advisor, has recommended the council adopt a parameters ordinance, which will allow the city council to authorize the sale of bond obligations at a future date as long as specific parameters are met. This provides the flexibility needed to ensure the issuance is sold when most practical and economically feasible. Authority granted by the ordinance expires one year from the date of approval. Projects to be funded through the issuance include the design and construction of a joint public safety complex and repairs to various roadways in the Valley I and Valley IV subdivisions, East Jones Street and Railroad Street, and costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinances as set forth in the caption. We do have our advisor from Hilltop here to give a little color commentary, I believe.
Good evening. Good to be with you. So Dave had provided an excellent summary, and what we're simply looking to do is, as he said, just get your approval of these parameters tonight. The nice thing about that is it gives us the maximum amount of flexibility to move forward. One thing that I will say is if you go back to the start of this year, we've seen rates increase anywhere from about 1.4% up to about 1.75% due to a number of factors, including the war in Ukraine, the Fed raising short-term interest rates, as well as inflation that's hit 40-year highs. So this just allows us, subject to meeting all these parameters, and as we've done in the past, to go out and market the bonds when we have everything ready to go, whenever we had the official statement ready. We do have our credit ratings, which were affirmed at AAA, so very happy about that. But this will just allow us to go forward and price those bonds in the most advantageous market possible.
Thank you. Council, any questions, comments? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'll move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney.
This is an ordinance providing for the issuance of City of Lewisville, Texas General Obligation Refunding and Improvement Bonds, Series 2022, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $68,750,000, awarding the sale thereof, levying a tax in payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting provisions incident and relating to the subject and purposes of this ordinance.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Hang tight. Item 11, Consider and Take Action on an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, Authorizing the Issuance and Sale of City of Lewisville, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Refunding and Improvement Bonds, Series 2022, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $15,200,000, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, an escrow or deposit agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating there too. Staff is planning to issue approximately $15.2 million in Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Refunding and Improvement Bonds this fiscal year. In order to allow flexibility in setting the sale date for the bonds, Hilltop Securities, the city's financial advisor, has recommended the council adopt a parameters ordinance, which will allow the city council to authorize the sale of bond obligations at a future date as long as specific parameters are met. This provides the flexibility needed to ensure the issuance is sold when most practical and economically feasible. Authority granted by the ordinance expires one year from the date of approval. Planned projects to be funded throughout the issue, through the issuance include additions and extensions to the city's waterworks and sewer system and costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth. Anything to add on that one?
No, sir, unless there's any questions.
Council? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas, Authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Lewisville, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Refunding and Improvement Revenue Bonds, Series 2022, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $15,200,000, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, an escrow or deposit agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating there too.
Council, if you please vote. Motion passes 5 to 0. Thank you, sir. Make sure it's advantageous. All right. Item I, Reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. I think I'm going to start to my right with Councilmember Meredith.
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library activities for the week. Money management savings for big expenses for adults. Tuesday, April 9th, sorry, Tuesday, April 19th, 6:30 to 7:30, Crawford Meeting Room. This is a workshop, it's part of the money management series provided by the United Way of Denton County. Cottage core coloring for adults age 18-plus, Thursday, April 21st, 6:00 to 7:30 p.m., in the Crawford Meeting Room.
That's it. Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, Mayor. I have some events and performances going on at the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, The Lion, The Witch, and The Wardrobe will be presented by Responsive Ed Solutions on April 19th and 20th. North Texas Emerald Spring Dance Show, presented by the University of North Texas, will be on April 28th. And here, there are some Italian words that I may not get right, but Frank Cintero and Incimo, presented by Mariore Produzioni, April 29th. Then, as always, the acoustic jam presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville happens every Friday night, 6:00 to 9:00. Then there are some activities going on, and the big one, the Then there are some activities going on, and the big one, this coming week, or this coming Saturday, is Color Palooza, a celebration of spring presented by the City of Lewisville. And that is, like I said, Saturday, April 23rd. Then we have some events that are starting up. Will be recurring events, Pilates in the Plaza, presented by Pilates in the City on Thursdays beginning April 28th. Yoga in the Plaza, presented by Blue and Ju Studio, Wednesdays beginning on May 4th. And we also have some art exhibitions going on. The Elementary West Art Show, presented by Lewisville ISD through April 30th. And if you haven't seen the art, the art exhibits of the elementary students, you've missed out on a tremendous exhibition, because I can draw stick figures, but some of these, some of those elementary kids do amazing work. And then the Radiate, presented by Intuition Gallery, is going on through April 30th. And that's all I have.
Nothing from our city secretary? All right. Pete, you can say something if you'd like. You're all good? Chief?
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing in parks? Thank you. I know we got a lake level here, at least.
Mayor, it's been nearly three months since it's been my privilege to report the lake level, so I did go to Lila this weekend to confirm the lake was still where it was when I left. If you haven't been up there, great opportunity to spend a little time in nature right here in the heart of our city. But lake level today is 521.59, which is about 4 tenths below the normal pool elevation.
No update, sir.
Thank you, sir. All right. Mr. Ferris?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Green?
Well, I just wanted to mention that we, we do have an election coming up, that it's actually a very exciting election for the City of Lewisville, because this is the, we are adding a new council seat, and this is also the very first time that residents in Castle Hills will be able to vote in the city election. So this is a really exciting one. So, early voting starts on Monday, April 25th, and looks like Denton County voters have two locations that they can vote at. That would be the Municipal Annex over by the library, and then there's also, I guess the other one is at Denton, is that right, Julie? It's either Denton or the Municipal Annex.
So Denton voters can early vote anywhere in Denton County that early voting is going on, so they're not limited just to those locations.
Okay.
But Election Day, we do have a number of more polling locations this year, because it's also combined with a constitutional amendment election. So they won't be, normally they've always voted at the Annex, this year that's going to be different. There'll be more locations, and we have those on our website also.
Yeah, I was about to say, I'm not going to read all of this, because you won't remember it, and I won't either, so it is all on the website. I think that's all I had. I'll leave something for Brandon.
Okay.
Councilmember Jones?
April 25th is a very great day, but I'll leave that one alone. It's my birthday. Applications are being accepted for Lewisville Citizens Police Academy. If you, you need to go online and sign up if you want to do that, it's great fun. You get, my favorite part was the self-defense class, and the, and the class we got to go to the gun range. So if you guys, you get to learn how the police do tactics and everything like that, and you have a better understanding of what you see. So I would suggest everybody sign up.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Key?
Wow, back in the day, when I went through the Citizens Police Academy, we didn't get to go to the gun range. Probably a smart move.
Well, TJ's class.
No comment.
Could have been the last.
Yes, this is true, this is true. I want to give a shout out to Special Abilities of North Texas. They just received a major certification from the Texas Workforce Commission. So now they're able to offer job coaching and job placement for adults with significant disabilities. So that's great. And I also want to mention that, look online if you want the information exactly where they're going to be, but we're about to have a motorcade come through Denton County for the Congressional Medal of Honor recipients. They're going to be going to 35W and then up to 35E to Gainesville. So any citizen that would like to wave them on, they're going to have to go to 35W. And it's supposed to be a very long motorcade. So congratulations to all of them, and that's all I have.
Thank you. City Manager?
I do have a few things. I wanted to give thanks to some of our directors. So these folks in the front row and spread sporadically throughout here will be the first to pass on gratitude for their staff, but rarely accept it for themselves. And so I want to call out a few people who've quarterbacked on this agenda specifically. So Chris Lee, you've done an excellent job on Central Square, and he really has quarterbacked for our police and fire and done an excellent job. We really rely on you, so I appreciate you. And also with that is Liz Plaster, she's really helped us in getting this to the finish line. And then, third is Dave Urb for his work with all the rating agencies, and really, I mean, we, it's a full team effort, but he quarterbacked it all and made sure we had answers for the rating agencies where they didn't have hardly any questions for us when we had our reviews. So I want to thank all of you guys for your hard work in this last two weeks.
It doesn't go unnoticed.
It was actually longer than two weeks, but yes.
We all appreciate y'all very much. I think we have one of the best staffs.
We do.
That's outstanding. I do have a couple of brief announcements here. To go with Color Palooza, if you want to try to get the blood flowing ahead of time, you can go out to Lila, and they are having a 6K that morning, so you can enjoy some new trails that have been cut out in that area. So hop onto the city website, look for L-L-E-L-A, Lila, and you can get more information on that. I'm debating whether I'm going to walk or run it, but I imagine I'll be there that morning. But excited about the new trails and the new opportunities out there. Boards and Commissions, we are accepting applications now for all of our city boards and commissions, and if you feel that it is your calling to give back to your city, we really could use you. We have lots of great opportunities, and of course, it just takes a few minutes to fill out, and if you have any questions on any of those boards and commissions, I know everybody sitting at this dais would be more than happy to answer those questions for you. Every one of us here has served in one aspect or another on boards and commissions and can help. The last thing is that I do have my next quarterly mayor's conversation, and that's going to be at 7:00 p.m. this Wednesday at Vista Ridge United Methodist Church. That'll be the third of my quarterly updates, and hopefully, if you have time, to come on out, it'll be about an hour. You can ask questions, find out more about what's going on in the city. It's just another opportunity to get the word out and, you know, make sure that residents have opportunities to meet with their electeds and talk about the issues that concern them. With that, we are going to move into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, and Section 551.087, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. At such time as we're done, we will reconvene back into regular session. Council will now reconvene into regular session. Is there any action to be taken?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We are moving to adjourn, and we are adjourned as there is no more action to be taken.
Yay. Are we not supposed to move to adjourn anymore?